Hello.
Hi.
All right. Were you on the policy subcommittee just before this?
Yes, yeah.
That's what I figured.
And then Julie and I were going back and forth trying to get us in here.
Okay, did you have a problem?
Julie couldn't get in and I kept, I would log in and then get booted out.
Okay.
So finally, I figured we were close enough. I'm just starting the meeting.
Great, thank you for getting us in.
Yeah.
Hello, Trevor. Let's hope we have no technical difficulties. Trevor. Are you able to see a whole screen full of people or, oh, you know what, I can probably go and just, I think there's a way I can see who's on, just to make sure that we have a quorum and such.
Oh, yeah, I can check the participants.
Okay.
So.
That'd be great if you could keep an eye.
Sure, so Lauren's here, you, Lauren. Yeah, Bethany's here.
And Bethany, good.
That's it, right, that's all you need for a quorum.
That is correct, so we will give it one minute and we will open and start. There we go.
Bethany Rose, you're my hero.
That is a very nice thing to hear, thank you.
Julianne, Bethany, thank you so much for coordinating together and getting this meeting started. All right, so we have a full slate of school committee members here. Is Jennifer with us yet? She is? Okay.
Hi.
Excellent, so let's open the meeting at 7:01. And I'll guide us through the process tonight, I'm gonna try to get through everything as efficiently as possible. So the first order of business, and I just want to be clear, is in regards to the FY23 budget. So the FY23 budget has been worked on, as you know, between us, Union 28. It has gone to the Finance Committee as well as the Select Board. So tonight's meeting is really for an opportunity for us to present the budget sort of as final. And it's an opportunity for anyone who is present to look at the budget, ask questions, or bring anything forward. It's sort of been worked on over a period of time, so I'm not anticipating anything, but certainly this is an opportunity for anyone to speak. Just for, I think, ease, is that something we could maybe at least put a screen, put on the screen? Are you able to do that, Caitlin?
I think I have to. Oh, sorry. Do I need to make you co-host?
Probably.
How do I do that?
I think you go on to like the host and then you can click other names.
The host can also just allow people to share their screens, so if you go to the Share Screen button in the upper right-hand corner, there's there's like a little tick you can click, you can click that will give you a menu and you should be able to, it should say something like multiple participants can share a screen.
Hey, sorry.
So while you are getting up on the screen, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the iteration that we're looking at tonight. Our new Director of Finance and Operations, Caitlin Sheridan, has been working with the Finance Committee to sort of adapt the way the or the way the budget looks in order to make sure that it was clear and concise and transparent. It does seem that over the years that I've been involved with the budget process, different people have different ways that they want to look at the budget. So this is a normal thing that happens, it's not to say that the way the budget was presented in the past was wrong or bad, it's just everybody has different thoughts about how to make it look efficient and clear. I will say with the Esser monies and such, you know, finding the right places to where to put it was really, I think, a piece of this. So. Any way to share it?
Yes, give me just a moment. I'm gonna share not the presentation I gave last time, but the actual, the budget that you were, that was sent to you.
Perfect.
No, I just have to get. My apologies.
No worries.
All right, I don't know if I did what you need to do.
I think so, is it up?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. So I have two parts today, one is the, what was sent to before with the rest of the budget, the draft or final adoption, and then I also do want to be more transparent about where Esser and School Choice money goes, so I sent something to the School Committee today that shows what those positions are, and I'll explain why we keep them separate. So here is our budget summary page, which I'm gonna start at and probably come back to in the end. We have, this is the FY21, FY22, and FY23 costs, and the difference between FY22 and FY23, you'll see most of the, the budget goes towards instruction, towards those teachers, teachers and paras and everyone that makes the school function. And then we have some differences. A decrease in administration costs. And that's due to a slight decrease in Chute Berry's portion of the total enrollment of Union 28 schools. Slight increase in the instruction. Slight increase in other school services. And you, you have this document also that you can look at, but I was gonna kind of give you a quick review of what we discussed at the last meeting. And then what it comes down to at the bottom here is the gross total being $2,417,336, which is a 2.26% increase over last year. And when we take out the grants that we have been getting this year, which we are budgeting in as conservatively of what we would get next year, it comes to $2,250,948, which is an increase of 2.43%. Now, I also want to show, I'm gonna stop sharing for just a second so I can pull it up without because it's not right in front of me at this second, here we go. And I'll share with you the part that I sent today. Here is where the School Choice and Esser money is going, so these positions are not part of our general operating budget, and they weren't part of the general operating budget for FY22 either, so when you look at FY22 in the budget, it doesn't include these, but they are in our schools right now. They were kept separate from the budget for FY22, so I had to keep them separate from the budget for FY23, or all of a sudden you can't compare the two anymore. So I didn't include Esser or School Choice as a revenue, I didn't include these positions as a, as a use of funding. So mostly, these positions, especially the Esser-funded positions, are one-year positions, because we find it, it's irresponsible to put Esser money into the budget because it's not sustainable, we only have that for a little while. So these are the positions specifically needed to deal, to try to support our kids through pandemic. So we're talking especially preschoolers and kindergartners and first graders that so much of their life has, has been, you know, post-2020, so that's where that money is going, but what we're comparing, where we get that 2 point, oh my gosh, and then 2.46 and 2.23, I don't know, those two values.
2.43.
Okay, I was close. Those money, that percentage is the increase comparing FY22 without these positions included to FY23 without these positions included. Would you like me to go back to the other budget document, or do you want me to stop?
Yeah, let's just go back to the, the screen of faces.
I can do that.
All right.
All right.
So I'm looking for a motion and a second, and then we can have further discussion on the budget. Do we have a motion to approve the budget for FY23 in the amount of $2,250,948, which is a 2.43% increase?
So moved.
Perfect. And a second?
Second.
Excellent. So are there any questions or comments in regards to the budget? And Trevor, if you can see any hands go up or anything like that, please let me know. Any school committee member comments or anything here? Again, we've been working on this for a while, I didn't expect any surprises. Caitlin, I do appreciate your ability to be flexible and accommodate everybody's requests. I do think that things do look clearer. I also appreciated some of the graphs, because I think the graphs really illustrate, you know, the focus of where our funds go. So thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you, and I do appreciate emails coming, trying, asking questions about the budget, because without those and going meeting to meeting, it would be kind of challenging to be able to create an explanation for, for, you know, why we do the things we do and why it looks the way we look, so thank you for, you know, anyone from the town that emailed me about it.
Great. Trevor has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Trevor.
Yeah, I just, could I just get the final amount again?
Yes, $2,250,948.
Thank you.
2.43% increase year over year, which is pretty moderate.
Got it, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna do.
Dan, before we move on, I just want to thank Caitlin, she's been so flexible and so accommodating and so responsive to inquiries from school committee members, from townsfolk. Anytime I want to meet with her, Jackie wants to meet with her, she's been super accommodating, so thank you so much, Caitlin, for being a great partner.
Thanks.
Excellent. So roll call vote, all in favor, has I?
Martella.
Rose, I.
Thomas Paken, I.
Sullivan, I.
Excellent, thank you all. All right. One of the next items on the agenda is public hearings. Now, I imagine there may be people here who are specifically want to talk about what's going to be happening with masks. So what I'd like to do, we're going to come to that as an agenda item. I'd like to hold off on public hearings, because I think what we'd like to do is to present a plan, and then we can collect any additional input. So what I'd like to do next is just review the perpetual calendar and at this point, I don't think there's anything that's not already being taken care of, the final budget vote happened today. So we're, we're on track. All right, any warrants and gifts? Steve?
I have four warrants. Payroll warrant number 316, dated 2/7/2022, in the amount of $84,852.10. Payroll warrant number 317, the date is 2/21/2022, and the amount is $85,596.56. And I have account payable number 3016 on 1/25/2022, in the amount of $10,936.33. And number 3017, dated 2/9/2022, in the amount of $4,763.95.
Trevor, do you have all those numbers? Excellent.
I have an additional one. I have warrant number 3018 for 217/2022, in the amount of $26,267.54.
Trevor, you got that one too?
Yeah, Caitlin sent all of these to me, thanks Caitlin.
Thank you. All right, so this is just to let the record show, those warrants have been submitted. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from January 20th, 2022?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Nice job as usual, Trevor, thank you. All of those in favor, has I?
Martella.
Thomas Paken, I.
Rose, I.
Sullivan, I.
Excellent, thank you. Unfinished business and updates, capital project building process, so I think my first question is, we still on target to have the roof done in April?
We, yeah, that, that's the date that they gave, and we haven't heard that they will not be doing that.
Excellent, Caitlin, anything on your end? For that?
Yeah, so I haven't been, I've been, I came in and looked at the, at the way that it is now. I have part of my Director of Finance and Operations report, I'll have some pictures and we'll talk, I have some more to say about the roof, and, but I don't know anything about the, where we stand with the roof right now in that project, I have nothing to add.
Excellent, okay, so that said.
Can I add one more thing to the roof?
Certainly, yeah.
So when Capital Planning met last, two weeks ago, we asked the town administrator, and she agreed to get the RFPs going for the other piece of the roof, so that, that is rolling now too. It's gonna be a little while, but it is in process now, it's not just a dream.
That's great, really good to hear.
That is good to hear.
Thank you.
And Caitlin, since you're gonna share a little bit more at that time, maybe at that point, we can talk a little bit more about the email that I had sent to everybody regarding sort of process. Just to save, save people from having to listen to boring talk. Is that good with everybody? Excellent, all right.
Dan, can I have a question? It's Lauren, can I have a quick question? What are RFPs?
It's.
Request for proposal.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that's, so that's request for proposals from engineers or consultants, so we don't have a dollar price, they will like bid themselves out to the town, and then we take either the best or the lowest or whatever it is. So we don't have a dollar amount yet on what that initial cost will be.
Yeah, it's all a process to get bids when something costs over a certain amount of money, and it's for fairness. Although you don't always have to go with the lowest price, they can factor in other things as well, so. All right, so Caitlin, when we get to that point, if you don't mind asking me to, to remind me to bring that back up, that'd be great, thank you. And we've already voted on adoption of the budget. So the next thing we're gonna talk about is a phasing in of the non-mated, non-mandated mask policy. So before you share that, Julie, I kind of want to say a few things about process, okay? And Julie, do you have that to share? Or?
I think that's gonna be Bethany, that's gonna need to do that.
Okay. You are gonna, we're not gonna quite share it yet. So first of all, I wanted to thank the administration, teachers, staff members, parents, and really especially students. This has been a really challenging time for everybody. And I think we've really seen a lot of people really working to cooperate, even though it's been very difficult. So I really do appreciate everybody, you know, being patient, working with our school and our community, this is difficult for all of us, and I guess I just really want to say I appreciate it, especially for the students. I also want to recognize administration and teachers and staff for a lot of the efforts they put in, mitigation efforts, sanitization efforts, the testing and contact tracing, which I know we continue to do, even though we're not required to. It goes, it, I just want to recognize that it's out of care, it's out of concern. And I appreciate all that you've done to really do those things that I think have been a significant factor in keeping people healthy and keeping students in school and keeping students learning, which is the primary focus for many of us on the school committee. So I've worked to develop this plan that's being proposed tonight. I looked at the feedback surveys from teachers, parents, and community members. I worked with administration and heard information from the Board of Health through administration as well. I've looked at information from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, looked at information from the CDC, as well as other school districts. I believe the goal is really complex. I think our main goal is we really want to make sure that we maintain a healthy environment for students, for teachers. That also helps to keep the goal of keeping students in the school. Not only for the students, but when teachers are sick, that's, that's a burden on how do we, how do we teach, including the scarcity of, of resources for substitute teachers. I think we all recognize the importance of learning and learning in many different ways, so I think we can look at the masks as being a way of keeping kids in school, but maybe also as somewhat of a barrier. Looking at all of these different factors, components, my goal was to move towards the ability for people to have the choice of whether they wear a mask or not. However, there were a few things that I really wanted to make sure that we were clear about, and we'll see this in the proposal. There are some things that we are mandated by federal law, like for students to wear masks on school buses or in the nurse's office, so those are some things that I really felt I didn't have much of a choice about. I also think part of the, this process was also to look at the vaccination rates of people within the school and to also look at COVID rates locally and in our community, so that's what we're looking at today. I also want to recognize that we still don't know what's coming down the pipe, and we need to be careful. I think with Omicron, we were maybe fortunate that it was a head-related cold sort of thing and didn't impact people, I think, in a real negative way or comparatively. But we don't know what's happening in the future, so I think we need to make sure that we have the ability to react to conditions as they change, to be careful and cognizant of, of what the COVID numbers are, and administration continues to work very closely with the Board of Health so that we can monitor that. So the mask mandate is listed on the 28th. Students will be returning back to school after a vacation, a vacation where they may be meeting with lots of different people, traveling. So we felt it was important for students to continue, everybody, to continue to wear the masks for the two-week period following break. After that, we will leave it up to individuals, teachers, staff, and students as to whether they want to wear a mask or not. We're gonna continue to do the testing, contact tracing, and monitoring within the school so that we can make sure that if there is a concern in a classroom or somewhere, that we can be aware and, and react to it. We'll have some recommendations, I think the recommendation from some, and again, looking, looking at the CDC, they're still recommending that students wear masks, so that will probably be the mask, the, the recommendation going forward for everybody to continue wearing masks, but we also see other reports and studies, so it will be an optional as to whether people want to wear masks after that date. I think one of the important aspects that is on this plan that honestly I have not seen on any other plan that I have looked at throughout the state is that in our plan, we're also making sure that everyone is respected for whatever their individual decision is, whether it be on vaccination or masking. So that if a student comes in with or without a mask, everyone should be given the same respect. And that we are all working together as a school community, as, as a town to try to accommodate everybody's needs, what everybody is looking at. And the data is all over there, all over the place, even before this meeting, I, I just looked at more information from CDC and looking at DESI, it's very, very complicated. So we, as elected officials, are doing our best to recognize what is happening with COVID through all of this information, studies, research, data. Recognizing the requests from individuals, I've gotten lots of emails, and I appreciate them, lots of them with lots of information in them, which we've read. So that said, could we put the plan up on the screen for all to sort of truce? And we'll give everyone a few minutes to look through it. The first part of that, you'll see the vaccination rates, which was part of the decision-making, and then the proposal for the school committee to consider this evening going down. So masks would be worn until March 14th. After that, it's optional, yet recommended to be worn. And that is actually the latest information as of this evening from the CDC. Buses in school, health offices, they'll need to be worn in there. We're gonna continue to monitor the cases through the testing. Let's see, the administration will continue to meet with the Board of Health on the local data or COVID numbers and data. on the local data or COVID numbers and data. And again, I want to also appreciate, I believe Arlene is on the, on this meeting. I do appreciate all of the insight that they have given, advice. Just their, their concern with people in the community and making recommendations on isolation or quarantining or explaining the difference, as well as helping people to find the resources that they need through this terrible pandemic. So thank you to all of you on the Board of Health, but Arlene, you're here. Um, the other mitigation measures will continue as best as we can. And if a student or staff member tests positive for COVID, there are public health guidance that we would follow. And I put it like that in there because the guidance has been changing over time. So this gives us the ability to look at whatever the current public health guidance is. For the students in the pre-kindergarten, we've also made some recommendations there. Um, these are, are this population that I believe is, uh, there is not a vaccination for, and we have some recommendations there that they continue to wear their masks indoor as well as outdoor. I think I'll say that especially with the outdoor, it'll all be conditions-based. The weather's nice, kids are playing, running around. That could be different, but oftentimes they're close together. In that case, we're still going to recommend that masks be worn. And that's a recommendation.
Dan, this is Jackie.
Yes.
I'm wondering if I see that in number seven, um, there's a really important sentence in there that I would really just like publicly stated. Which was the second part of number seven, which is the responsibility for mask-wearing lies with the individual and family and not with the school staff. So what can't happen is that teachers cannot be responsible for ensuring that all children have masks on whose parents want them to have masks. That's, that is, that's not super appropriate for us to have to do the whole day. Um, and so I just would like that, you know, specifically stated.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry I did miss that. Alright. Can we go back to the screen of faces? So first I'm going to ask for comments from the school committee, unless you prefer to hear comments from the public. School committee members, how do you feel?
I would like, I would like to hear from people who might have something to say here.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Lauren to, if we see hands go up, um, and maybe Trevor, I don't know. If, if you, if Lauren misses someone or something, that you might see more people. Again, I'm, I'm on a screen. I am limited with the number of people that I can see. And then I'll ask Lauren to, to go to the next person. So I do see one hand up. Andrea, did you have a comment?
Can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Yes, hi. So I'm, I'm wondering if we can see the survey data from the parents in the community?
She, did that go out at all, Jackie, or no?
I did not share, I did not do that, but I can attempt to try to find it.
Okay. Alright, so.
I mean, my, my concern is that if, if the majority of the community and the parents do still want masks to be worn in schools, and then the school is not supporting the families or the parents at all in their decision to have their child mask. So this is, this is where the, my concern is coming from. They're children, you know? You're putting a lot of responsibility on them.
Yeah, I have the survey results and I will find a way to post them. Right now, forty percent of the community voted for mandatory. And the remaining sixty percent, the remaining sixty percent, um, and I can, I'll share my screen too, but I just want to make sure I don't have names involved because this is like confidentiality. I just need to make sure I capture it the right way. Um, but I can read you that thirty-one point nine percent think it should be optional. Twenty-two-ish, twenty-one point six percent think it should be for two weeks and then optional. Um, eh, two people voted other, two people are still deciding, one person doesn't have a strong opinion and one person thinks it should be, um, highly recommended. So right now, um, like I said, it's forty-one point four percent, uh, believe it should be out of a hundred and sixteen people taking this survey. And let me just, um, kind of copy and paste this into a document so we can't see any names. So just give me a second.
Yeah, while you're doing that, I will say, just in looking at the data, it was pretty split.
Okay. Well, I'm still very concerned that the school will not support the parents in their decision to have their child mask.
Well, no.
Because you're just, it's just, you're saying you're going to respect everyone's decision, but that's not really respecting the family's decision. By not, we can't be there to tell our child, put your mask on.
It'd be difficult to try to identify which child has chosen, it, it's, it's a complicated, it's very complicated with kids. Was there another hand up? Yes, Jen, and then Renee.
Hello? I don't know if anyone can hear me.
We can hear you.
Great. So hello, everybody. I know most of you, um, and good friends with most of you. I just wanted to, I had written something out to read today, but I don't feel like it's really necessary. I really support this idea of having masks be optional. Um, after the two weeks of returning from February break, it makes sense according to the numbers. And also, in my mind as well, because COVID is a virus that will be present with us for a while and its variants as well. Um, very much like the flu and its variants. And I think that, um, there are a lot of positive things that come from allowing masking to be optional in terms of our children's mental health and emotional health, um, their cognitive well-being, their learning styles. There are a lot of benefits. So I think that when we can do such a thing, I think it's in our best interest to do so. So I really appreciate the difficult decisions that you all have had to make. Um, and I just wanted to voice my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee, you did have your hand up. Is it off now?
Yeah, no, I still want to talk.
Oh, okay.
So I, I don't know. I kind of disagree with the decision. I would prefer that we wear our masks longer. It is still flu season when your suggestion of March 14th. Um, from what I read, uh, flu season in Massachusetts actually runs through May. So Arlene could correct, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. So, you know, I think for an older teacher, I, I feel, um, that that is a little bit too much for me. I would prefer that we stay safe and healthy and careful and cognizant, as you suggested. And I think by wearing a mask until it is warmer outside, we would be doing that.
Okay, thank you, Renee, and teacher.
Also, which is what, really quickly, Bethany, I just sent you, um, I just copied and pasted the results and I just sent it to you so that you can share a screen.
Okay, it says teacher.
Sorry, I know, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm in the dark. Um, and I'm not trying to be in the dark. I just am. I'm trying to get the light so you can see me. I'm Viva Butler. I'm a sixth grade parent. Um, I do have something written up. Um, I think I'm going to read it. I think it responds to some of these things, but, um, so I, I also appreciate all of the time and attention and thought that committee members put into this as well as administration. But I also, uh, as Renee does, would disagree with the decision being as soon as March 14th. Um, the pandemic hasn't really changed enough at this point to justify mask change in schools, from my perspective. Uh, vaccines are effective, but not sufficient alone. American Academy of Pediatrics guidelines continued to recommend masks in schools as a highly effective mitigation strategy along with those improved ventilation, distancing of students, outdoor airflow, and use of outdoor spaces that we're so lucky to have and continue to use. Um, CDC guidelines, while I respect the science involved, are also influenced by politics, I think. Um, but they are still recommending, as you've noted, masks in places of high transmission, which we know that we still are. Um, our cases are still higher now than they were at this time last year in February. Um, we also know, and evidence has shown for way before CDC came out a few weeks ago, that high-quality masks for everyone help slow and stop that transmission. Um, COVID-19 is still a pandemic. Um, and even with the mitigation efforts we've had in place for all of this time, just recently, we had hospitals overwhelmed and a huge proportion of, um, our population infected. And those new variants are certain to come, come along and cause future surges. And we don't have any idea what the contagiousness and severity are going to be. Uh, Omicron and then the new BA2 variant are among the most contagious diseases that anyone knows of, including a rival in measles. And I don't think if we had a measles outbreak, we would just let it go through the school and not take all of the possible mitigation strategies we could. Um, and even though we are seeing that reduced severity, which is wonderful with Omicron, the potential and the huge unknowns of long COVID and long-term effects of even mild cases are really important for us to keep in mind for our kids and our families, our school, and our larger community. We have to put those most vulnerable people, um, and immune-compromised folks who are in our school and our community, um, the over sixties who are also in our school and community, and the unvaccinated and unboosted, which we know are also in our school and community, the youngest kids and lots of the kids. Hardly anyone's eligible for boosters, um, at the forefront and try to protect them. Um, and we can't assume, I don't think that it's risk-free to contract the disease even when vaccinated and boosted. Um, long-term effects are probably going to take years to uncover for people. Masks, we know, are highly effective in reducing airborne disease transmission, and universal masks are that much more effective. Um, with N95s, if people are wearing the higher quality, potentially four hundred times lower inhalation dose. And even with cloth masks, a four times lower inhalation dose when everyone is wearing masks. Um, that drops, of course, when not everyone is wearing masks. And from my perspective, wearing the masks, uh, teaches children to care about the physical well-being of their communities and cultivates a community perspective, which I think we can all agree is something we want our kids to have. Uh, not insignificant number of students and staff at SES have been infected already during the pandemic. And masks have almost certainly slowed that spread in schools and may have reduced the viral load, making cases less severe. Infections do occur. They're going to continue to occur. And a higher viral load in the air, if people are not masking, uh, might mean that reinfections and infections are more severe. Uh, from my perspective, I don't see students having a problem with masking. I'm sure that kids come home and complain sometimes about stuff, but in school, I, I do not see that. And I, I'm not saying there are never exceptions. I believe that can be the case, but, um, even today, my, the sixth graders were saying they really don't have a problem with masking indoors. They'd love to be able to take them off outside as soon as they can. I get that. Um, but they said they really don't. Um, and at the very least, I mean, I heard you saying this as well, that there would be something. But if the masks are going to come off, I think we have to have some really clear guidelines and metrics that say, what will, what would it take to resume that? You know, I mean, I think the lack of metrics with dropping the masks um, all over, not just for the school, are kind of nuts. I mean, I, I don't, I don't, you know, I mean, cases are dropping has been the answer. But dropping from what, you know? And why is it suddenly safer now? So if we have some really clear guidelines that say, what would the trigger be to say that masks went back on? Um, and that's not, you know, due to you guys. I just think that hasn't been a state or a country-wide conversation. I feel like the way the discussion is being had at the state and the country level suggests a permanence that's potentially super problematic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lauren.
Hi, Lauren, thank you. Uh, my name is Lauren Sullivan, and I'm a speech pathologist at Colrain. Um, and I just wanted to come and support the idea of allowing twice for masks. I think going on two years of masks now, I've seen the negative impact that mask can have. And for some time, we have considered those to be worthy sacrifices for a health crisis. And I think that it's good to determine an endpoint to that and decide to allow families and individuals to make their own choices for their own health and to be responsible for that on their own. And I appreciate, um, you, I appreciate the plan that we've come up with here, and I think that the plan, um, makes a lot of sense and gives a lot of individual choice for each family. Um, I also really appreciate the part that asks everyone to respect different choices. And I think that it's important that we teach our students to respect different viewpoints, even as our families may not agree with each other. So I just wanted to say thank you and that I really um, support this decision, especially as a speech teacher. My job has been very difficult, mass, and I look forward to the time where students will be able to learn speech in a natural way, which they have not been able to recently.
And I just want to say she meant to say Chootsbury. She, she said Colrain by accident. So she is, she is the Chootsbury speech teacher, not Colrain.
I was previously the speech teacher at Colrain. Sorry about that.
I do appreciate that clarification.
I thought it was nice she was coming out from Colrain to, to discuss our mask plan.
No, I live in Chootsbury.
Okay, um, teacher, your hand is up. Is it still up or did you have another comment?
No, I apologize. I just didn't put it down.
Okay, thank you.
Viva. I'm just going to call Viva teacher now.
Alright, committee members. Any thoughts, any motions?
Well, I would like to say that I do think that it's, um, worthwhile to consider what the metrics would be in order for us to need to, um, sort of reinstitute the masking. Um, and so I do think that 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 should be sort of a clear metric that we can all sort of get behind and, and that people can know that if it reaches above this limit. And I, and I, you know, I don't have that answer, but I think that that's something that we should definitely look into and sort of amend to whatever this is. If this proposal is approved, then there should be an amendment that adds that specific piece to it. And that's all I want to say.
So Julie, actually, I did write that down because that did stick out to me as well, that, um, that is something that we should be thinking about. What, what would be? And it, I, I guess that the only thought I have about that is it's also very complicated, you know, is it in a classroom, is it a? So I think we definitely need to be, to look at that a little bit more closely.
And I think we need to ask the Board of Health to help us with that.
That's going to say that. I think that's going to be something where we need the Board of Health's guidance.
I also think it might be helpful if we talk about, um, some of the Board of Health man mandates that you have to do. I think that might help. I don't know if, we didn't, we didn't read them, but, um, and Arlene is here and I could, I, I could be misspeaking, so please, and Katie Harrington is also here. So, you know, she, I don't know if she knows that, but, um, you know, if you are an individual that has COVID and you are home for the five days, and then you're symptom-free and you come back, you still do have to mask coming back to school for a certain amount of time. I believe it has to be five days, but it can be up to ten in certain cases. Um, and so, uh, that's also something that we're going to have to enforce. And then on top of that, I do personally feel like I would be comfortable with class
I do personally feel like I would be comfortable with classroom metrics for masking. So not necessarily school-wide, I mean, also school-wide. But if I would really be interested in having some support for Katie and I, for example, if there's a positive case in the third-grade class, we have a tiny class, does that mean we mask the class for two weeks? So things like that, I would be really, I would really appreciate some support with, because I think that that, it needs to be really clear for, for me and Katie too, as we, as we kind of lead this. And that, just briefly, I have to just say in front of everybody, Katie Harrington, our nurse, has not been absent one day. She has been at school every single day and including, since I, I'm pretty sure it's since we were in school last, since we were all, starting all in school last April. She has not missed a day of school. And I cannot tell you what that does to support our school, it's amazing. And I just wanted to publicly thank her in front of everybody, because that is, it's been.
Yeah, thank you, Katie.
Oh, I didn't tell you that I was calling out tomorrow, sorry.
That said, Arlene, is there anything that you would want to elaborate on, or Katie? I, I think what I had mentioned in there is that we would be looking at public health guidance. So perhaps, Arlene, you could expand a little bit about that.
Well, I think most of it's already been touched on. We don't have any great answers to all of this complex subject. But one thing I will say about the development of metrics is that it is trickier now with the prevalence of home testing that is not, results of which are not reported to public health officials. So that the metrics that we have these days probably underrepresent the number of cases that exist in town. So that handicaps me a little bit. But I can continue and plan on, as you saw in the plan, as presented on your screen. I intend to meet weekly with Jackie, or at least to report to her what our current numbers are insofar as, as I've got them. And yeah, we'll put heads together and develop what, what seems like a sound set of metrics.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you all for all that you've done through this whole process. It's been great, a long two years.
Yeah, no kidding.
Thank you, and for the whole community, you've been not only supportive to the school, but to the whole community. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So why don't we? Do we want to put an amendment in here about looking at metrics? And Lauren, I'm looking at you because I know you're really good with wording. Because there is a part about, let's see, let's let's see. Well, why don't we just make it number 10, so it'll be easy. Administration will have flexibility for reintroducing mitigation efforts dependent upon COVID cases. And those metrics will be determined by Board of Health, Administration, and perhaps School Committee Representation. Is that, does that sound okay? Did you get that, Trevor?
I know, can you repeat that, please?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, could you repeat that, please?
Oh, no.
Could we just get it from the recording? You said it very well, and I just think that would be hard to redo. But I also, could I also say one other thing? It's actually more of a question for Jackie and maybe Jennifer. The way that you just said that, and I cannot repeat it the way that you did. But basically, there are kind of a lot of cooks in the kitchen. And I think that probably when Jackie and Katie would need to be making this decision, it would be in a very quick turnaround situation. And so I definitely think that however we word it, like, we probably don't need to check with four different places before Katie and Jackie can like react and do what they need to do. And then like, like, maybe it's more reporting out to us and not like us having to vote on something.
Correct. I do think that that's very important, Julie. I think in crafting this, it gives flexibility to administration to really do what's necessary to react to conditions. And we don't know what those conditions are going to be moving forward. So we can't, I didn't want a policy that was going to restrict them in any way. So I agree with you 100%.
Also, I think as far as the metrics go, I agree that some sort of metrics are necessary. But I feel like we, we encountered this throughout COVID in that metrics are tricky in a town as small as ours, where one family of, you know, five people. I mean, we'd like, we, so we just have to, obviously, everyone involved knows that we're dealing with a small community, but we need to have, I guess, as part of those metrics, some of that flexibility built in, just because of the uniqueness of our town.
And that's why I, we're keeping all of our other mitigation meth, like, we're not, I'm not going to get rid of all of the other things that we're doing. So, you know, you know, as Viva will, will know too, like, the only mixing of cohorts, they, they do, they are mixing a bit at recess because we were, because, and we were masked, and now there's going to be an option to be masked. I still do think there'll be a lot of people masked. But like, in the hallway waiting for lunch, we try to space them out, which isn't always great, but we try the best that we can do. So we still are going to be in cohorts. And so I really think because our school has over 80%, 85, something like 88% participation in the PCR testing weekly that we get turned around in a day, that I, I think that's the gem that we kind of need to hold on to. And I think that our, that our metrics need to be based around, sure, the town in some respects, but really the, the classroom results. So I really think that it would be super helpful if we get, for example, again, again, I'm not, I'm not Arlene, and I don't have the same kind of knowledge. But if I get a result back in third grade and it's a positive result, I want to be able to mask that class, if I can, for a little bit of time, to be able to protect everybody. So, but I don't think it necessarily needs to be the whole school, because we are still so co-horted. Again, that's why I think townwide is yes, but I'm really interested in school-wide metrics. Because I have real-time PCR data for over 85% of my population.
And Julie, just, I want to make sure that I was clear that my, my role in being involved would really be for communication in crafting this, just a lot of information. I would not in any way want to be a burden or hindrance in a process that administration felt was important to protect students, so.
Completely heard, I just wanted to make sure when it was written, it was reflecting that.
Yeah, and I'm glad you said that, Julie, and I really appreciate Dan and the rest of the committee supporting crafting something that guides us, but allowing us to administer in real time. And that doesn't happen in all committees. So thank you to the Schutzbury Committee for crafting something that doesn't hinder us, but helps and assists us.
Okay, so we've made an amendment to the proposal, or a number 10, which we will get from in the recording. Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
I move to approve the plan as amended.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, vote, haze eye?
Thomas Pickman, I.
Rose, I.
Marta, I.
Sullivan, I.
Okay, I do want to say thank you to everyone who participated this evening. We heard you. It may not be that you have all of the results that you were looking for, the plan that you were looking for, but I will tell you that we were going to continue to work towards making sure that everyone is protected in any way that we can. If anyone has anything that they'd like to share, they can certainly contact me as a school committee member or any school committee member. We share information between each other to make sure that everybody's voices are heard. So thank you all for attending this evening, and we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you. Homeschool application.
Do we have a? Yes, we have a homeschool application. And I just, I just want to note that it was the most thorough application. I bet it even had like getting up for breakfast and going to bed. So it was really thorough, and I appreciated all of the information that the family sent. I just want to say a public thank you to that family.
Yeah, that was very, very thorough. So a motion to approve the homeschool application?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, I think that was Steve, maybe? All right, any discussion? We're all good with it? All in favor, haze eye?
Marta, I.
Rose, I.
Thomas Pickman, I.
Sullivan, I.
Okay. School choice discussion. So we're going to just continue to meander thoughts about how is the best way to use school choice funds? I don't think we have any proposals here tonight that I'm aware of. But any chance, Caitlin, or anything, right? So Caitlin, just to pull you in.
Yep.
This is going to be an ongoing discussion, sort of until we come up with some sort of a plan. And the plan could also be changed. It's, we're just looking for some sort of way that, moving forward, how is the best way to utilize school choice funds that's efficient and effective? That doesn't, that doesn't have a negative impact on our school budget moving forward.
Okay, I agree.
And I know that Jackie has shared with us some ideas on the usage of school choice funds. I don't know if you have that, but at some point, you should, you should also have that. And we, you also work with other schools who may be doing things differently. So I guess we'll keep it on the agenda and move, moving forward, having continued discussions on the best way to utilize those funds. Right, Jackie? Great, anything else to share on that at this point? Okay. All right. So before we go onto reports, Suzie Moser, I see you on, on the screen. Is there anything else that you would want to throw in at us?
I would like to receive whatever budget information at the same time as everyone else. So I'd like to, when the school committee got things, I'd like to have the town administrator and the finance committee, I'm the liaison, receive that, because I didn't see the most recent iteration. And that keeps us all on the same page at the same time. Because I come to these meetings and I haven't read it, I don't know what we're talking, I haven't seen it, so.
But you hadn't seen the most recent iteration of the budget?
No.
It hasn't changed since the last meeting.
I, I, the one I have doesn't have the same percentage on it. And so something's different. And it's just, I just think it'd be very good if we're all in the communication loop, is whatever it goes out of central office about budgets, if you put the FinCom liaison and the town administrator in the header, then we'll all be on the same page at the same time.
So Suzie, I think you're right in that you should be getting information regarding the budget, but I am looking at the one that is from November. And, and the numbers are the same, it's just the formatting is different. So maybe that's the confusion.
No, I have the one that Caitlin sent out on 1/20, or I got it on 1/20/22. And on the last page, the percentage is different. My page says it's 2.74% increase. So something's different. And I have been working with Caitlin, and she's been taking in my information. We've been working on it, and I have some more things to work on. But I'm just saying that whenever, whenever something goes out like this, if we all get it at the same time, then I'll come to this meeting with some awareness about what's happened.
I'm sorry. Oh, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, Suzie, I'm glad you mentioned this, because I think I saw for the first time today your email address somewhere, because I've been wanting to send you stuff from the region too. And I was thinking about this last time, that you should be getting this stuff when we get it. And so what email should we send stuff to that you get it directly?
Most people that are involved in town volunteering in government use a Gmail account, so mine is schutzbury.suzi.moser@gmail.com.
Okay, that's the one I saw today.
Great.
One of the things that I think is easy is, you know, the town administrator, that email address should always be the same regardless of who's in that position. I wonder if there was a way of, you know, having like an email account for, for the finance committee that regardless of who is the liaison, that it's something consistent. So we don't have to worry or wonder who's getting it, or how does that work? Even moving forward, for example, with, with like the buildings committee, you know, right now, we're sending things to Bob Groves, but what if the chair becomes Steve? You know, how do we keep up with a lot of that? So I'm wondering if we can maybe create email accounts for sort of those entities as opposed to a person.
So if you look on the town website, there is Contact Town Officials. And when they began this process, there were a limited number of dot orgs, schutzbury.orgs that were available, and they maxed it out. So then they switched over to anybody else who works for the town. You should have a separate, away from your personal account. So if somebody demands all your emails, they're not going to get all your personal emails. So that's why there's a sort of dual track. So if you look on the town website, under Contact Town Officials, anybody with a dot org is listed there with their dot org. I don't remember from back dealing with this more exactly which ones do. It's fine with me to be sent to the FinCom, and I can ask. And then the chair will be responsible for sending it to the liaison, so that's fine. And I do believe that the FinCom must be, it might be schutzbury.org. And so you can get those addresses right off the web. But of course, mine isn't on there, because I'm not at that level of town official offices. So there you go.
Thank you very much. So Jennifer, if you could relay the information to Pam, that when the board packets go out, that, that also goes to the finance committee. And moving forward, but we'll talk about the building stuff later. So how does that sound, Suzie?
That sounds good, I think that will help, then I can come to these meetings more prepared.
Absolutely, so we want, we want to make sure you have the information. I just want to make sure that we do it in a way that's easy, okay? Thank you. All right, Superintendent's report.
I'll be very brief this evening. We are still in the midst of lots of budgeting in our Union 28 towns. And so Caitlin and I continue to meet daily and tweak budgets and look at projections from the Commonwealth as well as our towns. I'm also in the midst of mask mandate meetings. This is my second this week, and we will continue to discuss that at our This is my second this week and we will continue to discuss that at our separate committees. I did send out a notice to all of the school committee members. I miss you Pam, because usually you do that for me, that remote meetings got an extension until July. So we do have that option moving forward through the rest of the school year, which was nice to see. And just a reminder, our March joint supervisory committee, we have a special guest speaker, Glenn Kuchar. So even if you're not a Union 28 joint supervisory committee member, he's going to come and talk about school committee and superintendent roles. And Glenn is always a highly entertaining speaker, much more entertaining than I. So please feel free to come join us remotely. It will be on Zoom and thank you to Shootsberry for helping to host. I don't think Glenn Kuchar is a fan of Google Meet and he told me in no uncertain terms. So thank you to Shootsberry for being our hosts. And finally, there is a little bit of talk. I don't know where it's going to go. We'll be sharing it at our next leadership team meeting after February break. We all need a break about accountability light, which is what the commissioner is calling the accountability measures with MCAS this year. So not sure what that looks like, what's going to happen, but I'll keep you all posted about that. And that's all I have for this evening, except for one more. Boy, do I miss Pam when she is not here. She is just super amazing and things run so smoothly when she's here.
Truly.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, that when we do get into the world of actually meeting face to face again, I'd just like to put a pin in the idea that actually meeting virtually allows people who have family obligations and who have accessibility issues and people in town to join just much easier. And like, I definitely would love to see you all face to face, but honestly, it's also much easier for me to grab a slice of pizza right before I have to get on this computer and to know that I can hear all hell breaking loose behind me and stop this if I need to. So.
Well, I don't typically have hell breaking loose, but I do like the ability to grab a meal. And if you really feel strongly, I'm glad, so glad you brought that up around accessibility and access. Please write your legislators, write to Governor Baker before he leaves us, write to the commissioner and just let them know where we live, right? Even in winter time. Let them know we have small towns, we have accessibility issues, and this really works well for families, for small rural towns, et cetera, et cetera. So let them know that we, we really, it works for us.
Yeah. Is it something else? I'll put my hand down, but is this something where it gets to be decided based on like, like, is it something that comes from anyone outside of our town that we have to meet face to face?
It comes from the Commonwealth, the governor and the legislature, but it was supposed to end in April. And I think there was some advocacy going on and so it's continuing through the school year. So, you know, I think they need to heal, hear from real people that this really works. So, okay, send an email.
We've never had so many community members come that, I know it's also because it's been like a pandemic and lots of other things, but we have had way more participation at meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I know the region has a policy, but I thought we did too, where as long as there's a quorum, somebody could, we could even take turns and somebody could be remote. Because I, I know the region definitely has that and I thought we did too.
So I think in Irving, as I think the elected officials have to be there, but like I, Irving is meeting now in person, but I can still attend virtually. So I don't know all of the parameters, Stephen, but I do know that a quorum of elected officials maybe have to be in person. I'm not exactly sure, but we could.
Yeah, that's, because that's what it is at the region. As long as there's a quorum, then people who are traveling can still come in and, and vote as long as, because yeah, yeah, with the quorum, you can do that.
Right, but you have to have a quorum of the people in, present in, in there. Suzie?
On my town Thursdays, you're talking about the remote participation that preceded the pandemic. And it was limited to issues around somebody traveling. In general, the state wasn't going down that road. It didn't go down that road really until the pandemic. And it is a mass general laws and the governor could act it in an emergency situation and acted that change. And it is still subject to how the legislature sees it. And I do understand people's liking it and, but also town government did function before we did this. So in a limited way, the state had allowed it before the pandemic. And it looks like eventually it will rescind that and go back to limited for travel remote participation.
Yeah, we'll see. All right, Director of Finance and Operations. Oh, one thing. You mentioned Pam. So if you all saw the Massachusetts Association of School Committees put out a thing for an award of some sort for people in that position. So several of us from Union 28 did nominate Pam, but she didn't get it. But I, I hope that she, she at least got some recognition. But hopefully she got some recognition from several school committee members. I think us chairs sort of banded together to write letters on her behalf. I believe Jennifer, you did as well. But she didn't get it, but hopefully at least she realizes that all of her committees love her. So I just wanted to point that out. All right, Director of Finance and Operations, Caitlin.
Hi, so we've been working on this budget, working on the budgets and reaching out and answering questions about the budget. And this is one of those kind of nice nights that I can stop talking about the, the finance part and talk more about the operations part. Except for one thing, chapter 70 money, we do have the preliminary cherry sheet estimates for shootsberry. It's a very slight, but a slight increase in chapter 70 money projected for or proposed for FY '23. From $633,326 to $636,326. So a $3,000 increase in chapter 70 money has been proposed in the governor's budget. So moving on to the operations part, I did have a chance to take some pictures and kind of get some, some information about roof at shootsberry. I will preface with, I'm not an expert in roofs at all, but I'm a good person to soak information and hopefully kind of get it to you. So Jackie, if you need, if you, you have a lot more information on the roof. So if you want to interject to any point here, I wouldn't mind. And I'm going to share my screen with some, it's just a quick, very quick slideshow with some of the pictures from inside the building. So we know that the gymnasium roof is getting redone. And here's some of the water damage that has happened result of that roof needing repairs. So you'll see kind of on the left, we have some water damage to this part and then the ceiling. And Jackie, you know, I had talked about, or you know, she informed me about the floor, the specific floor. If it gets any more damage, we're really, if it needs to be replaced, we're talking a huge amount of money to replace this gym floor if there's any more water damage. So hopefully this roof repair will come before that's necessary. Yeah, the floor, that picture you have, there is heaving on the floor. Luckily, it's, it is on the sides where you're not running, which is really great and hopefully it will stay that way. Because our insurer, you know, a few years ago came and said it's an absolutely beautiful floor, which I agree with. And that it's one of the only floors like this left in New England, which is pretty awesome. It, but what's not awesome is that it's all single fought, like little slivers of beautiful wood in like iron, like placeholders. It's like exquisite, but it's really expensive. And if it heaves, it's not going to be able to be saved really. Yeah. And this picture doesn't kind of do justice exactly what's going on with the heaving. It's just kind of an image and, but there is some sort of heaving on the, on the edges there. So I'm so happy that this roof will be repaired and hopefully with the news tonight, we can do some more roof work. Because as you can see, we have a classroom with students with buckets around them with water collecting from the roof leaking into the classrooms. So this is one of the, the classrooms have a ceiling tile that's, will be replaced. As we've heard from the custodian, there have been quite a few and buckets collecting water. And then we have some damage, we can tell in the ceiling tiles from some of the water. Other water damage around the building, we noticed and captured number of places that we have damaged the ceiling tiles because of the water. And it's hard to tell from the picture exactly, but we do have some on the left picture, some water damage to that wood and to the wall a bit. And Jackie and I had talked about some of the water coming off of the roof and on without any gutters hitting that area and making the sidewalk have sort of a shorter life expectancy because of the water coming off of the roof there. So all things to, to kind of keep in mind as we talk about projects for, for the school. And we, I sent out an email about sort of what's our process for, for upgrades to the facilities and to, to projects. And Dan, you were, you were great in kind of getting back to me with sort of a scope of who's, you know, whose roles and do what responsibilities. And, and thank you so much for that. Did you want me to talk about your email? Or do you want to address sort of what you see as the?
So I just wanted to mention, I just drafted what I thought was logical based upon my years here. This is just what I drafted. So I'm also looking for the committee to say, oh no, it should go here or it should do this way, some other way. But obviously with capital expenditures, it goes to the capital planning committee. Yeah, but all of that, definitely the person who is in charge of Director of Finance and Operations should be a part of all of that. If there is a maintenance issue, the principal works with the janitor, head janitor to look at maintenance plans and schedules. If there's a repair that needs to be done, it, it's within the scope of the budget. You know, a leaky faucet or whatever, I mean, the janitor in conjunction with the principal should be able to, you know, hire someone to fix it. But if it's complicated, complex, expensive, then I think notifying the Director of Finance and Operations, that position reaches out to Town Administrator and Buildings Committee. I look at the town administrator's role and this is something where I am going to bring this to other departments to sort of get their input. So that we have a clear role for everybody and that it's not just something that I think is good, but that will be followed by everyone, you know. So I drafted it. You can provide input if you'd like. Maybe it'd be easier from an email. And Trevor, I suppose I should share it with you since you're taking minutes. I'll forward it to you. But if you want to share with me any of your thoughts, but I do plan on trying to iron it down so that Caitlin, in your position, you will know who to contact. But even beyond that, it's a, I go by position. So anyone in your position should know who to contact for different issues.
Yeah, I really appreciate that effort. I think stepping in and having some guidance on, on who to go to for what things and what is inside and outside of your responsibilities is, is really helpful. So thank you for helping me.
We'll keep working on, make sure it's, because it's complicated, right, Lauren?
I'm not quite sure how it happened, but somewhere along the lines, the power to decide what happens to the roof and when fell to the chair of the buildings committee. Not to the entire buildings committee, not to any other department, but just the chair and his chosen roof people. I don't, I don't know how it happened. And as, like you say, Dan, it really is time to get this back in this, with the schools, the town administrator and whatever departments it takes to get this back as a group thing and not just a one person issue.
Right. So again, I, in, in my vision, which could be totally screwed up, but my vision is that the town administrator's role is to sort of usher through a project. So they find out from the Director of Finance and Operations, we have a problem with a water heater. The, and this is a previous problem, the.
Good. I was worried about another project.
Then you would contact the town administrator and someone on the buildings committee. The buildings committee then evaluates, okay, so we need to replace the water heater or we need to fix the water heater or whatever. They'll know because like you, I'm not a building expert, I'm not a water heater expert. But hopefully these are people with some expertise that can then say, here are the options. You have three. You can replace it with this, this, or do this. Here are the costs. They will know who the vendors are. And then it comes to really the, either the school committee or between them and the town administrator to decide, well, where's the funding for this going to come from? Is it something from our budget? Does it have to come from stabilization or rainy day? I mean, you know, go ahead, Lauren.
I think it's really helpful, Dan, to have that sort of.
Flow chart.
Yeah, flow chart. Thank you. I was thinking chain of command and that's not what I wanted to say. My understanding is that the buildings committee is an advisory board. So they're supposed to, with their expertise, make recommendations. But that's, I feel like that clarity needs to come from somewhere else. As long as, you know, as long as Jackie knows who she needs to communicate with and Caitlin knows who she needs to communicate with. So I, I appreciate us trying to get to the point of that clarity and then make sure that other people understand that that's how we're functioning. And then, I mean, I don't mean to, I just, I, I think that there are some things that are sort of beyond our purview, but, but we can say, you know, don't show up at the school. And when there are issues, this is what Jackie's going to do and this is what Caitlin's going to do. And, and then we're clear.
Yeah, Steve?
Yeah, so Lauren, the select board is working on the, what the purview is of the buildings committee and all of this. And it should become clearer very soon.
Right, but that said, I'll also mention that, you know, I did get a call from a community member and they were asking for the school committee to put forth some sort of, I don't know, request or something about like how to pay for the roof. And I said, well, that's not, we don't do that, like, at least, and again, I'm speaking for the committee, but my feeling is like, we want the roof fixed. We need it fixed right. So somebody's got to take care of how it's fixed right. And I'm assuming that's sort of a buildings committee. And then someone's got to pay for it. So that's got to be the finance committee. And I see the role of the town administrator sort of ushering through the project. Making sure that they're working with the finance committee to figure out like, what are the funds that we're going to use? But like from my perspective, it's like, I don't care how it's paid for. But certainly the finance committee may have recommendations as to how best to use funds to pay for things. Right, Suzie? If she's still there.
The process for funding has included in the past Bruce's efforts to get the MSBA loan or grant. And yeah, there's people involved in this. But it isn't the school committees. You're right. It isn't the school committee's job to.
Right, in general, it's the finance committee.
The finance committee, but also the Director of Operations at U28 has been the person preparing the applications for the MSBA. And, and I know that you, Dan, didn't you go and testify recently on that?
That was something different. That was a human services forum, but not, not under MSBA. I was legislators.
Okay, I got that wrong. But I do think that working on this flow chart and identifying things, getting a clearer. Okay, I got that wrong. But I do think that working on this flowchart and identifying things, getting a clearer understanding from the select board on the building committee's responsibilities. And, and using the town administrator as sort of making sure things are moving forward. I think that's all in your plan and that's good.
Good. And it's not going to be my plan. It's going to be, I'm just starting it. I want to start the ball rolling. People can do what they want with it, but.
The collective view.
We, we, we just need to know what is the plan and the process for things. All right, Steve?
Yes, Suzie, I'm glad you asked that because I, I had forgotten about asking this, but isn't this the time of year that we do apply again for the, the roof money, the MSBA money? Isn't, didn't Bruce do that in January and February?
I know that Natalie was going to, Becky reached out to get a legislator involved in this really ridiculous process. The MSBA has been using. And I don't know exactly where that is. And that also highlights how the town administrator is part of the pulling together the threads at all levels. Legislative, small committees in town, intercommittee activities. And that person needs to be kept in the loop. And that's going to be part of the school committee flowchart.
And we haven't received any notification relative to the MSBA.
Jennifer, do you think you or you or Caitlin could check on whether or not there is an application?
Yeah, we usually get a notification. In the, we get an email notification that it's time for MSBA. I certainly can check, but every year I get applications for all four schools.
Great. I don't know how that all works. So thank you.
And Jen, you get that from the state? They solicit?
Yeah. And you know, every year the timeline fluctuates, the amount of money fluctuates that because it's a line item in the state budget and sort of the parameters fluctuate. I know we got money for Swift River for doors and windows and they haven't done a doors and windows project since we applied. So it just really depends on the budget allocation at the state level. But I certainly can reach out and see if, you know, when it might be coming.
And do you feel like Bruce was aware of the information? And like, how did he get to know about it?
He may have gotten an email, but I would get the email and forward it to Bruce. So he was aware perhaps from the state level and also from me sending him the emails.
I will say that when I met with legislators, they all seemed to be indicating that there was a lot of money. And that everyone should get the, get their money now. Whatever that means. All right, Caitlin, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Principal's report.
Yeah, I, I don't have a lot to share because it's been very busy. It's been very busy around a lot of things. But we have report cards going home to families next week. And there's a little note from me and just a reminder to families that, you know, we're still navigating through a lot of academic and social emotional recovery. And that report cards might feel and look a little bit different because of that. And if there is any sort of question or concern from the families that they should feel really comfortable reaching out and, and talking about that. And then, you know, we're thinking about an artist in residence that we would like to have an outside artist in residence. We're thinking of maybe a visual artist, but we're not sure. But we're definitely looking at that. We're moving ahead with scheduling and talking about a nature's classroom expedition for our fifth and sixth graders in the fall. So we are making sure that it's refundable in case things with COVID get an different. But, but we're moving ahead with that. One of our parents is leaving to be the full-time art teacher in, in Orange at the Orange Elementary Schools. And so that's really sad. She's a very beloved member of the community. Her name is Sarah Cadron. But we will be posting for that position and filling it. And she's currently in our fourth grade. So it's our fourth grade classroom that will need assistance. And then finally, as Jen said, my fingers are really crossed and I, I beg you to cross your fingers that we do actually have MCAS light and you know, we're already in the middle of scheduling MCAS dates and getting computers ready and thinking about all of that. And it feels really not good to be doing that when there's a whole lot of other stuff that is more important and that our focus should be on. So I'm really hoping that MCAS light comes through. I, I don't really understand exactly what that will mean, but we, what, what we definitely don't need is to have the added pressure of being judged on standardized test scores after two years of interrupted learning. So that's really my whole report. You, you saw all my surveys going out and my data collection and all of that around the masking. It's extremely time consuming and a lot of talking with community people and families and parents and staff members that want to talk about it. And I'm happy to do so, but it is extremely time consuming and I'm very much looking forward to vacation. And that's my report.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions for Jackie? I should have asked that too for but you guys know, if you have a question, just blurt it out or raise a hand or. Okay. Amherst Pelham representatives report. Steve?
Mine will be super quick. Since the four town, the last four town meeting, the feedback to the superintendent and the finance director was all positive. So we are gonna, we're gonna run with the hundred percent modified five-year rolling average, which is what Chute's Berry was hoping for. And so at least for the next two years, that'll be possible with the use of the Esser funds. So what happens? Three years from now, I'm not sure. And the other thing is the feat, the athletic fields. That's still, we're trying, still trying to go forward on that. But with the, at that four town meetings where all four towns made it very clear that there's not a lot of the Community Preservation Act money available. That we're struggling to figure out how to get it started. But we really are, we're looking at moving the field, reorienting the fields and making the field bigger and the track better. Regardless of what, how it's funded. And we're getting it to a point now where they'll be able to be private fundraising going on also, which will be a big boost. So those are my, my two things.
On the assessment method, was that with or without the guardrails?
Oh, that's, that's with the guardrails.
With the guardrails.
Yeah, at least this year.
Okay.
And then they'll, that, that summer study group will figure out what happens to them beyond next year.
Okay.
Can I ask a really quick? Yeah, I, I just have a question and it can be very quick. And Steve, I'm only asking this because like I need to be able to tell people why. So can, do you know what Amherst is doing with the masks? And I, Jen, I think read us something. Is it true they're, they're staying with masks? Just because I know I'll have people saying like, my kid down here is doing this and what are you doing and masking and la, la, la. So do you know what Amherst is doing with that?
Yeah, at this point, Amherst is staying with the masks. I don't know about the elementary level, but the middle school and high school are keeping the masks.
And is that because, I'm just trying to get my, is that because there's a townwide mandate?
Yes, that's correct. Cause we, we defer totally to the Amherst Board of Health. And until they change, as soon as they change something, within a day or two, we change it also.
Okay, that's the same information I got Jackie as well.
Okay, good. That's, it's just helpful so that when I get those questions, I can answer them.
Hey, any other questions for Steve? All right, Union twenty eight? Well, we haven't been doing. And for me with the collaborative, basically we're, we had our financial reports shown. Caitlin, if you're familiar with funds balance reports, it was interesting because they show like parentheses when there's a positive and people were confused. So we're working to figure out some different ways of giving the same information in an easier way to, to read. If anyone is familiar with MOAC, it's the Massachusetts Organization for Educational Collaboratives. They had reached out to me as chair of the largest collaborative in Massachusetts for sort of input on like what they could or should be doing, which I thought was great because I've always felt that collaboratives are a really important part of the education system in the state of Massachusetts. Providing lots of efficiencies, professional development, licensure programs, those kinds of things. If anyone has been to the conference for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, it's combined with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's. So I'm suggesting they also have MOAC a part of that with sort of networking opportunities for board members from collaboratives to meet, although, you know, from the state. And also to help people have a little bit more information of what collaboratives do and are. Because whenever I say I'm on the board for the collaborative educational services or CES, they have no idea what that is. And I say, heck. Oh, then they know that. So heck was the old name for it. I did attend a human services forum. So legislators were invited. We went with sort of different topics to approach legislators with. So the Student Opportunity Act is one of the things that I pushed because it does have a lot of things in there with funding and we talked, I talked about that. It was interesting to hear some of the other topics. For example, I think they were looking at legislation on quarries because people who have a bad quarry. Twenty years later, thirty years later, it sticks with them and how it impacts their lives. And the collaborative runs educational programs for the Department of Youth Services. So these are people that are generally incarcerated. So it was a very important topic, I thought. So I appreciated being a part of attending the forum and advocating. I also brought up the school business administration and talking about how there should be greater flexibility and more money in there so that we can fix our school roof. And we're also negotiating a contract for people, teachers in Department of Youth Services. It's complicated and challenging because basically there's a contract and the collaborative bid on the contract within the contract are the parameters of how the contract is with salary structures and such. It's been that way for a long time. Teachers are hired at a pretty good rate of pay. But as they sort of go over the years, their pay doesn't keep up with it. They don't have steps and lanes. So after usually five or six years, teachers leave after they're very well trained and they go to public schools. And so we have this constant revolving door. So my approach or suggestion was, well, why don't we just change the way we do things? So we had to meet with the Department of Youth Services, Todd Gosd, that did, and he's trying to work with them to allow flexibility within the contract so that we can give teachers really what they deserve. That being the process where we have a lot of them that come to our meetings. So there's thirty-six members on the collaborative and then we have sometimes twenty or thirty teachers from all over the state. I've gotten letters, including to my business, they're sending letters. So it's been a little crazy there too. But we're hoping that we have a really good outcome for teachers in that program. And that we're able to do that with monies that we already have. But just having the flexibility to use money in a different way. So a lot of good things that happen with the Department of Youth Services Program and special ed kids and institutional settings. So that's all I have to report on that. Policies. We have a first reading on JRA student records. So we're not going to read it out loud. We've already got the reading. We'll move on to the final vote on policy I H B A A observation of special education program. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Second.
All right. You got that, Trevor? Excellent. All those in favor, any discussion? All in favor? Is I?
Martell, aye.
Rose, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Okay. And we have a final vote on J I students' rights and responsibilities, motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, second.
A second.
Discussion. Okay, all in favor? Is I?
Martell, aye.
Thomas Pinkman, aye.
Rose, aye.
Sullivan, aye.
Hey. Future business is all there listed. I'm not going to read it. Anytime anyone would ever like to put anything on the agenda, please feel free to contact me, Pam or Jennifer. We'll make sure that it's done. I appreciate Lauren, you forwarding an email that you had received. I always forward emails that I receive to all of you. So keeping information fluid without violating the meeting law. I also want to thank everybody for their participation tonight. It was a bit challenging. I appreciate all of the effort from administration in working with me to craft something that we thought was going to be not something that one side wanted or another side wanted, but perhaps something that both sides could, could live with. And I think we struck that balance tonight. So I do appreciate everyone's, you know, keen interest in listening and participating in the discussion. And I'm happy that, that it was approved and we can move forward with that. And we'll hope and pray that between mitigation efforts and, and everything else and that things begin to continue to wade in the same direction, wane in the same direction. So is there anything else that anyone would like to say before I adjourn? All right. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody. Thanks, Trevor, for all your work.
One more day, Jack, and vacation. So much vacation for you.
Thank you all.
Aye.